Okay, this will be a Town and Hennessy Board of Trustees Meeting, October 11th, 2022. Roll call please.
Richard?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here. Okay, I want to report from Hennessy and I am for it. Barb, you got any updates on the wine festival?
I was in there, were you there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Had a good turnout. I don't think maybe it was quite as good as some that we've had, but it seemed like...
The wine and chocolate.
It seemed like it was a good turnout for that. And that's the only thing I've got right now, unless you can think of anything additional that I might have missed. Okay. Item three will be considered approval consent agenda. A, minutes of September meetings. B, approval of claims as follows. September purchase orders, eighteen thousand sixty-five thirty-two. October purchase orders, thirty thousand one ninety-four forty-nine. October restricted sales tax fund, twenty-eight thousand six ninety-two eighty-four. October library fund, one forty-eight fifty-seven. October street and alley fund, shows nothing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and accept the following reports. Treasure, library, and police. Approve resolution twenty-two-two oh four to amend two thousand sixteen capital improvement plan to replace two new water lines. Approve resolution in two thousand twenty-two oh five to authorize the application for the REIT grant to replace two new water lines. And item F, renew property liability insurance with the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group.
Can we pull the REIT down so we can discuss that?
Yes. Item E.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll pull item E down into the regular agenda. Any questions or corrections or additions on the consent agenda? If not, if there are not any other changes, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you. Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, item four, citizens' comments.
Okay. Oh, she pulled it, you're not going to discuss it?
Down here under regular business.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Because you can't discuss it in a consent agenda. It has to be a package, so we're bringing it down.
Okay, item five, town administrator's report. Tiffany?
I'm giving you guys all my report. The only thing that, it seems like every day there's more and more grants coming down the hike. It's just one of those times, it seems like it's a roller coaster with grants, like there's a whole bunch available, then there's nothing available, there's a whole bunch available. Here lately, there's a whole bunch. So a new one that came down last Friday was municipal roads drilling activities fund. And that's gonna, it's a fund that'd be, I guess, taxes and different things off of the oil rates and stuff. They're putting money into a fund for small municipalities to be able to go out there to help with roads where there's old filled traffic. And so I have our engineer working on Mitchell Road and Cemetery Road to see what we can do to apply for those funds.
Great, good.
So, anyway, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. We can get up to four hundred thousand dollars and it's a seventy-five twenty-five grant.
Thank you. Good job. Very good job.
And also our second annual planning meeting is going to be January twenty-first. It's the third Saturday in January. I've got the seminar room and I've got the lady from NODA scheduled for that, too. The cemetery bathroom storage, you guys have asked to be boarded up. I actually have, I'm getting close to actually finishing the project.
Good.
So hopefully we'll get that back within the next week or so and be able to move forward with that.
I don't think we necessarily need to board up the closure. It's the gable up there is where the OSB is that's, it's not what, the weather's getting at.
Well, I'm hoping that maybe we can just go ahead and just complete the project.
Good. That would be great.
And then also, I would like to ask you guys to come up with, like, for me, because I do the other employees, but like a job evaluation and what you expect as a town administrator. Because I know I hear a bunch of things and different things, so that may be something that you guys can do in the future.
Question. You mind?
No.
Oh. You don't have a job description?
Um, in the ordinance book, there is one, yes.
Oh, okay.
But it's very vague.
That would help me at least head off in the right direction. That's what I was asking.
It's very vague.
Okay.
And I'm just hearing different things about what people think my job should be. And so to me, I think it would be good if you guys would sit down and actually come together and evaluate.
So you're requesting that we sit down as a board?
Mm-hmm.
And do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That might be something that we may want to do at a special meeting.
Yeah.
Because I can see that taking some time.
I can, too. But I, I mean, that way, it's set in stone. People are not saying, well, she should be doing this, but actually that's not within my...
Right.
...job description. Or we have new people coming on and they think that I should be doing this, but yet it's still, you know, it's just, I think it's something that maybe you guys should visit annually.
Yeah, I agree.
And see.
But isn't that in our job evaluations? At the end of the year, that we have a yearly where we're supposed to evaluate all, all city employees?
I, we do. I mean, the supervisors and myself, we do evaluations.
I thought in the handbook, at the end of the year, we're supposed to do an annual evaluation of all employees. In our handbook, it had...
I don't know that the town board is.
I don't think the board is. But I'm, this is, that's what I read in the handbook.
Yeah, that's in the handbook. Sure is.
But are you sure that's not just for the town administrator that the board evaluates?
I'm not sure. I said all, I had all the partners, I don't, I mean...
I'll look it up.
Okay. We can find out.
You know, I just wanted to grab that, see if in January, if we could do the whole thing at the same time. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I think what Tiffany's asking for that we should do quicker, yeah. And that may be, like I said, that may take some time. So we should probably dedicate a special meeting to that. You all agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. One question I have is, where are we at with the Howdy Water Sewer on that?
They haven't given me, I haven't, I know they have water, or they have water lines up to there, or they've bored underneath the highway with the sewer line and the water line, so...
So it's up to their property?
They have, I think, um...
So they're...
I haven't met with Jay, the owner. I haven't met with him recently, too.
See, I think they're pretty well about them, though. Both of them are in the...
I really think so, yeah.
I think for those stations there, no, I know.
Because I had to put in a little station.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on your report? Any other appreciatives or anything about town administrator's report?
I've got another question. Back on the topic we were talking about just a minute ago. Do you think you could ask your peers in other towns, maybe get one, two, or maybe three job descriptions that would be similar to what you're doing? And that would give us another, another head start. What do you think about that?
That's fine.
I think that, I think that might be a good idea. That'd keep us from starting on a blank sheet of paper, anyway.
Well, I mean, you have what's in the, you have what's in the ordinance book. So that's a start. And then I think that, I think I'll go from there. But yeah, I'll get, O'Keane has a town form of government, I'll get with O'Keane. There's, there's several town form of governments where I'll get some information from him.
Sounds good. Okay, under other scheduled business, discuss, approve, deny, reject, or take action on the following. Item H, discuss possible action approved, approved quote, to tear down the old daycare building?
Um, so it's, to me, it's a very big eyesore over there. I think we just need to clear it and get it level and where they can mow it and different things.
Did we know?
No, I was getting close. And it was a little, I never came back because they were in town and they said that they could do it. And I thought, oh, no, it'll be fine, I can bring it to them. Well, now the prices went up. So, it's eighty-five hundred dollars to tear it down.
Okay. And that is foundation, concrete, whatever's there, we're going to get level...
Yeah, it's Johnson's wrecking.
Level Y.
Yes.
That's where it is.
And they would take it all off, like we didn't have to worry about the, where they're going to put it.
Good. That's awesome. Well, in all honesty, I don't think that sounds too bad. You know, it was like eight, nine years ago, it cost us six thousand dollars to have a house done.
Yeah.
And prices has doubled since then.
Yeah.
And if we're only getting eighty-one hundred, I think it's a good price.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, yeah.
Who's the bidder on that?
Um, well, Jackson's, well, wrecked, Jackson's wrecking, part of Enid.
All right, where are they?
Strong of Enid.
I'm sorry.
Enid.
Okay, thank you.
For those of you that, that may not know, we have had some vandalism issues there with broken windows. The building has termites in it. It, it needs to be gone. I thought we could use it for some training and things, and we have, and it's worked well for that. But the, I feel like the liability sitting there outweighs the benefits, so... I make a motion to tear down the old building that, what do you want to call it here? Daycare for eighty-five hundred dollars. Thank you. Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, any matter not known or which could not have been reasonably foreseen?
Hold on just a minute, can you...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we need to bring down item E from the consent agenda. Thank you.
So the reason why I originally emailed out an REIT application where we were asking for two hundred thousand dollars and we were going to fit in like two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, it was to replace the two lines. So it would be Benita from Fourth to Seventh and Dunlap, between Dunlap and Arapahoe. No, am I... Okay, Dunlap, hold on, I'm getting confused. Dunlap from Fourth to Seventh. And then between Arapahoe and Benita from Fourth to Fifth. So we'd be talking about four blocks of water line. Well, it came back four hundred and some odd thousand dollars and I talked to Alyssa this, it was, I think, on Friday and Thursday. And she said that the one over there between Benita and Arapahoe, it goes down the alley because we have several trailers that are in the alley. She's saying that they could do that because we could do a two-inch line there, because there's no fire hydrant on there or anything like that. And to feed those four trailers, we could do a two-inch line and they would be able to do that. So I had the engineer go back and just do the Dunlap Fourth to Seventh, and it came back two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. So for a hundred, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what that single block of line would have been. So to me, I think that our employees could do it well under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I agree. Tiffany, while you're working over there, well, did you check to see if that fire hydrant segment was not included? But there is a new line through there, correct?
Yes, and she's got that now, too. It's going to be on her list of things to get done.
Okay, I thought maybe we could throw it in, but that's probably something they can just do.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm talking about replacing an old fire hydrant that is at Sixth and Benita. It's an old two-way hydrant with two outlets that we will replace with a new type that's got the five-inch connection.
So just...
Stupid question, did you say a two-inch line?
That would be just this alleyway over there between Arapahoe and Benita. There is a, there's an alleyway that has, I think, three or four trailers in the alley. It's in the five hundred block of Benita.
What's under, what's in there now, Tiffany? Do you know what size line?
It's like an inch and a half, every inch. So it'd be bigger than what they have.
I just wondered how that works where you require...
There's no hybrids on that line, Barb. It's just strictly...
It's a service line. It's kind of like a service line.
It's a service line, just feeding residents.
But there are lines that carry more than, you know, just in that area?
In that area, yes, yes.
Okay, sorry, I was just...
Yeah, no, that's good.
It was sounding strange.
And the one between Seventh and Fourth Street on Dunlap, there's one hydrant in that span and it's at Dunlap and Sixth. And if you want to see an antique drive by there, that is without a doubt the, the single worst fire hydrant we have in the entire community. So this project, this project needs to be down. That, that will improve our fire flows over there greatly. And I think they've been having some leak issues, have they not?
Yeah.
In that old line. It's very...
So that's why I wanted to pull it down, too, and for, you know, to let you know that it's actually, I, now, if you guys want to go ahead, we can go ahead and, and submit that application for four hundred and some odd thousand, but I figure with what we can do, we can do it far less than...
No, I think that's a good idea. I agree. That's what you, that's what we got you for. Figure out where we've saved the money and get things accomplished with us.
And I just got the numbers from the engineer this afternoon.
Yeah, great. So do we need to, what do we need to do as far as this resolution?
To approve the resolution. You need to approve the resolution. It's in the packet.
Okay. So just the twenty-two-two oh five, correct?
Yes, and it's for a hundred and forty, it's where the town pledges a hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Okay.
What can we do right there to the south of them? That trailer park down there, we've never done all that digging up there with every place of water line, all the way to Seventh Street?
Where, where are you coming from?
That trailer park from Sixth to Seventh Street.
Yes, that was the last REIT grant that we did. We put in a six-inch line in there.
So like Ricky's house on Fourth Street to Fifth Street?
In that alley.
Yeah, his house on that alley or the line on that alley?
I don't know if his house is on that alley, but I know all those trailers are on that.
Because I know it's near, like, right there by the, the REIT going down by the alley, so I didn't know if it included his house or how that water line ran.
All the trailers in the alley, though, are on that.
I know they dug one, dug some of that line up when they cleaned that one house up to the West Street, that, that backyard, though.
Okay, I make a motion, approve resolution twenty-two-two oh five. I second that. Roll call.
Bert?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay. Now, new business, any items which are not known or could have been reasonably foreseen since the time of the, of the agenda?
I have one. I handed it out.
It is time. Where's Richard's?
It's not on there. I just noticed that when he handed this out.
Bert?
It's not on here. Go, go ahead, Richard.
I don't want to worry everybody, I'm having trouble hearing my battery went out while driving over and for me to hear, I really need to be face to face with it. Cliff, I'd like you, you know, but I moved over here so I could hear better.
Good.
I don't know how this got left off the agenda, I submitted it, but I want to follow up with our, what the town attorney recommended, and Tiffany did a real good job of that. I felt like this, when we had the last vacancy, it just was a horrendous election and it just didn't go well.
I don't understand what we're doing here.
So Richard had emailed me about putting this item on the agenda, and so I forwarded it to Katie. Well, then I do my own separate one, and she only used my own separate one instead of also taking what Richard had sent, too. And so this did not get put on the agenda. So he's trying to do new business.
So it doesn't really meet the law, but it was unforeseen at the time. It's a screw-up, right? I mean, I'm just asking.
Well, yes, yes, yes. But he could also discuss it down in his councilperson report, too.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that, Richard. If you'll wait for that, you'll be within the law if you will wait until it's your turn as a councilperson to bring that up, okay? Because it doesn't, it doesn't meet the open meeting law for you to discuss it, because it was foreseen at the time, that's, you know...
It doesn't fit the, the scope of being able to put it under new business.
Right.
So if we can just move it down here to councilperson report.
Oh, I, I got those confused. I thought I could go ahead.
Oh, you can under councilperson's report.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, Richard.
That's okay.
Okay. And we'll get there in just a second.
That's why. Because I made the agenda over here, so...
Got it figured out?
Yes. Well, we're, and I, and I think I'm going to create Katie an actual email address for her to have as a clerk, because I've been sending stuff to her work email, and then we've also been sending it to this one, and so when she, we don't know where she goes and did that.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
And so it's causing all kinds of conflict.
Okay, I think that's...
I second that.
Okay, citizens' comments. Any make anything to add? All right, councilperson's report, it's Richard.
Okay. This is a follow-up. I had placed this on agenda, Tiffany, just out of curiosity.
I forwarded it to Katie's work email.
Oh, okay.
But she did the agendas here, and so she didn't have access to...
It was a clerical error.
Okay.
I'll take the blame, Richard. Well, I didn't even review the agenda, so I mean...
This is a follow-up, there's, is it two parts to this? The first part, and Tiffany did a great job, the attorney, this, I, I just, I didn't like how this, we had this last vacancy, how that went back, that goes back to October last year, and that created some controversy. But the attorney, town attorney at that time, suggested to clear out the confusion as who's, who's running, who's running, to have them come and file a form at the, in the town hall. And Tiffany came up with this form, which I think is pretty good. I don't know if you've had time to read it, since you didn't get it before, but it's very basic stuff.
Can I get a copy?
Here you go. Sure.
What we want to do, like, last time we had people make resign, all right? And if there's a person in town that wants to be on the board, is they'll come out and fill this up, fill this out. So like our next board meeting, there's five people that wants to come on the board.
Okay, it's not, yeah, probably.
When you do that, I mean, to be legally, they got to go down to Kingfisher, can't they?
That's it, there's, okay, so because in the past, there's been really no set guidelines on, like, when there's a...
Vacancy.
Vacancy. How do you notify the board members that you're interested? So people that are interested in running for an un...
Unoccupied seat.
Unoccupied seat.
Or even...
That doesn't, that it's not election time.
Okay.
You understand? It's not election time.
Now, I didn't, but I thought if it was pre-election, I could think of that.
No, 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 no.
I didn't think that was in the law.
If it's, if it's where we announce for them to go down and file and stuff, then this does not play into that.
Okay.
It's as if Bert resigns tomorrow and there's a seat, then...
Give me a piece of cake.
Then they can, then how, how do we, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
Get people who are interested to come in?
Right, okay.
So I think, I think that's a really good thing, Richard, because...
Well, it's not me, it's the town attorney that suggested it.
It, well, it, because I had people approach me, people approached different board members, and since only two board members can talk, if somebody approached Cliff and approached me, we could talk about that, but the rest of you wouldn't know anything about it till we got to the meeting. So I think this is, I think this is...
Not only that, it'd be, even if you don't have nobody resigning and, and you had three or four people come fill this out, it was on file. So that way, if we did have somebody that resigned, we could go back into the file and kind of look and maybe even contact them, see if they'd still be here.
I, I think it ought to be a current thing to where, once, once a position is filled, then these will be destroyed out of the file, and if another position come open, we wouldn't dig back, we would let them refile if they were still interested. Just so the town and, I won't be on here, so there's anything, you know, but I'm just thinking so that the town would know that whoever filled that out was still currently interested, still currently actively wanting to be on.
Got to move it to...
Pardon? They could have moved to... Exactly, exactly. Or not be qualified any longer. Sure.
They could have went to jail.
I had one question. I think the state law says that if you're related to a town board member, or is that the employee side?
That would be nepotism. So you could not appoint anyone to your third degree.
Third degree, yeah.
But now, that doesn't mean come election time, they can't go down there, say...
And run.
And run.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So like if Harold's on the board now, because he still has two and a half years, so come next April, his son could go file. His, because then it's up to the people of the town to either vote him in or not vote him in. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I just wondered if that disclosure should be put on here. You know, somebody might think they, they want to be on town board, but the Oklahoma state law says, no, you can't because you're the, what, third degree relative or something? It would be a disclosure on here.
You could do it by just putting a simple line that said, are you related to anybody currently serving? Yes or no? Currently serving or currently employed? Right, right, yes or no, yeah. And then you can look into it.
Because I don't even know if, if you guys like appoint, you guys couldn't appoint, um, let me think. You could, you couldn't appoint, say, my mom. If you did, I would have to resign. I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, right.
Right.
But it's my understanding your mom could run...
Correct.
...for election, and then it would be up to the townspeople knowing that that's your mom, and if they didn't have an issue with that and voted to elect your mom, she could serve.
That's correct.
And you could stay employed.
Yes.
Right. But if it's an appointment, you can't. Yeah.
Like your cousin?
Cousin?
Yeah.
Oh, you would be fine with a cousin, right?
Yeah.
Because it's not the third degree.
Well, if it's been discussed, I'll make a motion that we do this.
Well, there's nothing on the agenda to, I mean, we can't take action tonight. But we will, Richard. And I will fix this to where we ask them if they're related to any board members.
Well, the second item I got in my email is that if two or more persons filed, that if, that if they indicate they want to be on the town board when there's a vacancy. That automatically could go to election. I think the election process, I think generates interest. Each candidate must come forth and state what their goals are. And I think, I think it also frees the town council from being accused of plain favoritism. In and of, it costs $2,500 to have an election, but I consider that investment, not an expense.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think we will have to create an ordinance to do that. So, that will, let's put that on the next agenda as well.
And if what the town attorney will have to look, look at that?
Uh huh.
Okay.
And the town attorney would have to then draft an ordinance to make that part of our town ordinance.
Back on something like that, though, if he resigned early, like I say, August. An election ain't next year till May. That means the town goes to a board member for the rest of the nine months.
Correct.
So, you know.
Correct. And that's something to think about. And when it's on the agenda, we can discuss it. I don't really think we can discuss it here under councilperson report until it's on the agenda.
You can't come to any kind of.
Yeah, we can't, we can't vote or make a decision. They'll, they'll get that on the next agenda.
I got one other item and that's in the Hennessy Grant Guide. And I copied page nine on that. And I want you to go down to the second, third paragraph. It says, tear down the library in Snyder History Building, question mark. It was well over a year ago that I was informed that the town council was considering tearing down the Library and History Center. Although I had never heard this issue on the town council agenda to be discussed. Tearing down the library makes no sense. But the points to be made here is that Hennessy received a grant of $45,000 for the library fiscal year 2008. Shouldn't Hennessy be applying for similar grants for the Library and History Center rather than doing nothing and not submitting grants? And then proposing tearing down the Library and History Center? I made that statement, if you look at the front page, in November of 2019. I made a statement. No one, at that time, I presented that in the town council meeting. I handed out a grant guide. This is where I took it from, from the Grant Guide. This is from the Grant Guide. I presented it to the town council and I was begging for pursuing grants for the library. Bert, no one questioned that at that time. Nobody questioned my statement. It was well over a year that I was informed that the town council was considering tearing down the library. And so when, we had that little ruckus. And the town attorney was brought in. If, if I did something wrong or said something incorrect, you're two years late. Because I said this in November of 2019.
I'm, I don't, I'm sorry. I'm not following what you're. I'm not following what you're trying to say.
You said I lied. That's when you brought the town attorney in? Tiffany, you gave me the letter from the Kingfisher paper owner.
That was like.
Three months ago.
Yeah, three, four months ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's what they, they sent me, so I gave it to everybody.
Was it? I'll respond to it. I did all of that was. If, if I did something wrong, if I lied, you're two years too late.
I'm, I'm still not following your point. I'm sorry. Because you're talking about the response from the editor of the Kingfisher paper.
I'm talking about that meeting. That letter was part of it. Wasn't a big part of it.
What meeting, Richard?
Pardon?
What meeting?
I think about, what, I don't know, three or four months ago.
It was a board meeting?
Yeah, it was a board meeting.
I'm going to ask the other board members. Are you all following? Because, do you understand? I don't. I don't know what he's trying to say. I'm sorry.
Trying to go backwards, see what meeting that you was talking about, you know? Are you talking, you talking about this month that we got, you got, the letter came in from the deal? Where you handed us this?
I'm not sure I understand you.
When did you hand this grant writing deal to us? Because I've never seen it.
It was back in 2019.
You use David Havens.
No.
I handed, see, the date is 2019.
This was, this was back several years back, huh?
But what I'm saying is I was accused in a town council meeting of making, making that statement up. It was well over a year ago. I was informed that the town council was considering tearing down the Library and History Center. Although I never heard this issue on the town council agenda. And I was.
Richard, it wasn't on the town council agenda because the town never discussed tearing it down.
I know. But.
But, but you're saying the town discussed tearing it down, but we have, we didn't?
I, no. That's what this is saying. It agrees, I agree. But in the town council, three months ago, whatever. You read a letter or whatever, I don't know if you read from notes or whatever, from the town council saying I was jeopardizing the insurance or the MAGA insurance, whatever. And that I had misrepresented that. But I said this two years ago.
Well, what, what I said at that time was that when town board members act alone. Town insurance may not cover them. It may not be covered by liability. And that, that's.
And that was based on a statement that I had implied.
I think you have to actually, where this is going, Richard, you know? I think what Bert was trying to say, that when you called Tiffany, I think you said something on Facebook. And on the, it's all about Hennessy post.
I remember that.
And that's what I think, that's what I think that.
That's what I'm referring to.
You know, so, I think that's what, I think that's what you're trying to get at.
And that's what I'm trying to be on that.
But you was calling Tiffany, you called Tiffany, like, was it a liar?
Yeah, you called me a name.
And it was on public records. And Bert told you that, that we can't be calling people names on a public.
I didn't accuse you of lying. You accused Tiffany and I of lying.
Well.
This is coming.
I stand by all the statements I made, Tiffany. Your, your statement that the town council was not considering tearing down the library. I said.
It was.
That's a true statement. They never have considered it.
That's correct. But outside, because when I.
You're contradicting yourself, Richard.
No, no.
What he trying to say is that there has been discussion, just like when I opened that meeting up. When we discussed the library, I just said myself about tearing the library down. You know, but building a new one or moving the library to a different place or refurbishing that. What route we wanted to go with the library. That's the only discussion that there was about tearing it down. I'm the one that said it because I, but I included every, every part of it about to tear it down, refurbish it, you know, build a new one. And whatsoever. But I hadn't talked with nobody else about tearing that down, you know?
And that's when I appointed the committee that year on to discuss what to do with that building and get it backed up. You and David both served on that committee.
Well, I'm glad the committee is, was appointed. But on my statement here, it's not only a thing of he said, she said. This town has had the library since 1983. It's more than a library. It's the history center and entertainment center. And has done absolutely nothing to push that building. We had a proposal merging it with a high school. They had a proposal to put it next door.
There was never, okay, so that's just, okay, Richard, you're saying we have proposals, but we don't have proposals. These are things that are just like going through our minds. I mean, to me, I look at a whole different thing. Just discussion on different things. That doesn't mean that it's a proposal or it's going to be done. I mean, we have to look at everything. And sometimes when we run stuff, I run stuff across Bert when he comes in. I run stuff against Harold when he comes in. David, when he comes in. It's bouncing information to see, see where we go. I mean, just all the possibilities in the world. Because you cannot think inside the box. You got to think outside the box.
Is there, were you bouncing around with this past 40 years? Has this town council ever bounced the idea of pursuing grants and doing something for the library?
Yeah, you can't lie this much.
Museum?
Okay, so, it's.
See, here, I think you have, you got what you want with the committee, you know? Now, you know, I think that we, you guys, that you're on the committee, you guys can push the issue of what you want, you know? I heard we got a report back. You know, I, I have not seen a report.
It's on the website.
So, you know, it'd be nice to read it and see what it says, you know? You know, I haven't talked to you about it. I haven't talked to David about it. I even hadn't talked to Tiffany about it, you know? I actually, when I heard it was up, I actually figured that would be on, one of the things on the agenda this month, you know?
It's on our website. Sorry.
So.
I, I, I'm not ahead of the committee and I didn't want to, you know.
Yeah, correct. I think.
I'd like to bring you up to date on that.
I mean, I think.
We got a, we got the report in and nothing in there surprises me. It's an old building. Needs electrical work and all of that, fireproofing and handicap access and all of that. The walls of the building are good. So, there's, proposals were discussed in the last meeting and there'll be another meeting. And I think that's where it'll kind of get finalized and come forward to the town council.
So, then, when a decision's made, then that's time to pursue a grant. Because to say nothing's been done with that building in 40 years is just not true. It's been air conditioned. The auditorium's been air conditioned. There's been new windows put in it. There's been a handicap accessible restroom put in it. There's been a handicap accessible ramp put on the front. I mean, I could go on and on. There's been a lot done to that building.
Well, that's great. But it, it, why then are we proposing moving the building, library to the high school?
Richard, we're not.
We're not.
No, we're not. Not at all.
And that's, that's impossible. That was brought up in the.
That was discussion here.
No, it was actually brought up at the Hennessy, our annual meeting that we had at the school. We just told that they were buying or building a library.
And I think we discussed it here prior to appointing the committee.
But right now, right now, I think that you got your committee, you know, and I don't know where you guys are going to go with this. But, you know, it's just like as you guys are sitting there at the planning meeting and even say, hey, you know, why don't we talk to the board? Let's put new ceiling tiles in here, get rid of some of the stain, you know, clean it up, just, you know, do whatever until we can do something major, you know? We're a long ways from that, but anything helps, you know, new carpet, you know?
I, I honestly think that we're getting out of the realm of councilperson reports because we're going, we're going into discussion. Cliff, do you have anything?
No, sir.
David?
Yes, sir, I do. I've got, I've got some things I want to talk about. I'm going to do like, I think it was Tiffany that did it at our last meeting. We got some rumors going around town. People talking about me. And that's okay. I was expecting it. We've got we've got at least one Hennessy town employee saying to other people, other citizens.
If we're going to talk about town employees, that cannot be out in public.
That's got to be an executive session.
Okay. All right. Like I said, I wasn't going to name any employee.
I still don't think you can.
You're opening us for liability. It's got to be in private.
All right. I'm done.
Okay. Harold, you got anything else?
My only deal is when the agenda gets moved, like it did this last week. You know, the, and don't get me wrong, I don't mind the move date. But, you know, when there's a holiday the day before, it would have been nice if we got a notice that we were closed Monday. So, we could came in Friday, put stuff on the agenda. Instead of, who's here to Friday, there ain't nothing you can do, you know? Because we all knew, when you moved it to, we all knew Monday we were, you know, I, I didn't. Not realize Columbus Day, I've never had Columbus Day off, you know, so, you know.
Anytime there's a federal holiday, the town's off.
But I don't know what they're doing, because I've never.
If the post office and banks close, the town's closed.
The one, the one that hardly knows, Fourth of July, Christmas and Thanksgiving, yes? You know, so, but that's all I, you know, is ask.
Well, what we'll do is if there's.
I guess if there's a holiday, I can just add it in the.
Actually, when you do the meeting change date, just put on there, all agenda items have to be turned in by, in the date. We'll do that.
That'll solve that.
What's the general rule, 48 hours before the meeting?
Um, we have to post the agenda 24.
24, so.
Unless it's a special meeting and then it's 48.
Say again?
So, if it's a regular meeting, then it's 24 hours. If it's a special meeting, then it's 48 hours. But since the holiday was yesterday, the 24 backs us up to Friday.
Those weekends don't count.
Because weekends and holidays don't count.
So, it's 24 business hours, which is.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Is that it? I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Hang on, I'm dead in line.
Oh.
You told me to hurry up. I, I just.
What would you have to say, Bert? Would you like to say something?
I, I just want to remind everybody that I think it's good to keep up and do refresh on the Open Meeting Act. And remind trustees that if you talk to one trustee, you cannot talk to another one about the same item. So, there again, I think, when I first went on, on this board and now that I'm getting ready to go off. I was kind of reflecting today what's really been one of the most helpful things. And I think it was when Barb handed me a little yellow book that said something about let the sun shine. But it was a book about the open meeting law. And as I look back on that, at first, I really thought, this is a pain. I can't just go talk to anybody. And but it, it is there for a purpose and it serves an awesome purpose. And it's to make sure that the public's money is spent in public. And Bill Walton told me that years ago. And that kind of surmised how the thing is. I think it's good to refresh on it from time to time. And I still want to have O-MAGA put on a seminar. And I still want to have O-MAG, they put on a seminar that they can come out. I'm still working on trying to get that done, so that's all.
I was on the condo board in Florida, once I lived in Florida, and they had to say it ruled, even for condos.
Yeah, I think it's important. Okay, go ahead. I make a motion to adjourn. Second. Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
And Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees, October 11th, 2022. Roll call.
Richard?
Here.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Here.
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
All right, consider approval, consent agenda, minutes of meeting approval of claims as follows. September purchase order, 61,60913. October purchase orders, 83,66525. October meter deposit refund, zero. Treasuries report and renewed property liability insurance with the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance. Any questions or additions or changes to consent agenda? If not, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Second, roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Here.
Okay, 103, send us comments.
Yes. Yeah, I've sat through lots and lots of meetings, but it seems like they continue to get destroyed. Does the Oklahoma Municipal League have, like, our little sunshine book that newspapers put out that tells you what the laws are, what you can do, what you cannot do legally during the meetings and.
Like a handbook?
Ah! So you all do have one of those?
Yeah.
Are you, is every member given one of those when they come on the board?
When they go through their, you know, officials, new officials training.
Ah!
Now, that's incorrect. This is a $50 book you have to buy at the OML office.
Okay.
What, what the class gives them are copies of the PowerPoint slides.
Oh, okay, because they used to give out that book.
They don't give it out anymore.
Because I know it's kind of, because I used to give one to every news member, this was years ago.
It's 50 bucks.
A couple of bucks or something like that. But now that, they're like $35 for them, so I just don't do it. Since it's now my magel instead of newspapers.
They got some more stuff down there for sale, too, but it's really, the expense level is a little too high.
Some of that stuff, we may have it here in the office, too.
That ought to be something that the town should pay more.
Yeah.
Sorry. That's all way too soon.
Well, we used to, but then they were giving it out in the, you know, the new officials workshop. And so we quit buying them, and so.
They give, you know, I got the book, that book that you talked about, but it's not near in that, that book.
Because I have one of those in my office.
And, once a year, I, I sent Tiffany something on it, I think, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you did.
The Attorney General's Office, along with the newspapers, sponsored these meetings all over the state. There's some more that are coming up. I'll be happy to give you the information, where you can go and get some free advice from the Attorney General, because that's what this is for. They're going to explain to you what you can and cannot do instead of having to read a $50 book that's 150 pages. And you can have a one-on-one with people that are there. And we, we did one of those years ago, that we had one in Kingfisher that the newspaper and the Clipper sponsored. And we had like 80 people who came, who weren't expecting that.
Great.
Yeah, it was great.
They usually have one in Enid, and one in Stillwater, and one in the city.
They've already had the one in Enid, and I'll check and get it to Tiffany when the next ones are, but it would be very beneficial for you guys to go to one of those.
Sounds good.
Barbara, I apologize. My hearing is not so good this evening. Who sponsoring this, which association?
Attorney General's.
Attorney General's Office?
Office in the Oklahoma Press Association worked together for that, in conjunction with the Press Association.
Yeah.
Okay. Other scheduled business discussed except approve, deny, reject the following?
None.
That's very unusual.
It is.
New business? Send us comments. Councilperson's reports on utilities, Richard?
Pardon?
Councilperson report?
No.
No? Cliff?
No, sir.
David?
No, sir.
Harold?
I got one deal since Frank's here. Two months ago, he, he came to us, and he asked us about that sewer dump down there. And are we ever going to open that back up?
We just now got our pump in, our other pump in last week, and so Bonnie and I are working on guidelines and different things for that, too.
Are we going to have the company pump in it, or does it?
Um, we're talking about it.
Do you ever hold, do you ever be the cost, what it's actually cost us in, in the last couple of years, what we kind of referred, we've done to that?
I can give them to you.
I know we've talked about the drasher, $4,000 pump, whatever. You don't mind?
The one we just finished was, I think, $11,000 or so. And then that mulcher.
Muffin, muffler.
That one was quite expensive, too.
That's, that's actually the name of it.
Bert, maybe I'm off topic again. But if, if a council member wanted to present something concerning a town employee, what is the procedure to call for?
It has to be put on the agenda.
And asking for a private?
It has to be listed on the agenda for the, for the board to vote to go into executive session. But in that agenda item, it has to name the employee that will be discussed. So that employee is put on notice that they are, that their job is going to be discussed in executive session. So they have an opportunity to be here in case they need to be called in. Then the board votes to go into executive session. And if that vote passes, then the board convenes in executive session, and then when we come out, we vote to reconvene into regular meeting. But yes, concerning all personnel matters have to be discussed in an executive session, and the name of the employee has to be listed. You can't, in other words, Richard, you can't just say police department employees or street department or water department. It's, if, if you want to talk about everybody in the water department, you got to list everybody's name in that department.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Fine details.
Okay. Okay, I don't have anything, so I make a motion to adjourn. My second, roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold? David?
Yes.
Richard?